I hereby call the meeting to order. Let us stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Child, great creator, we thank you for this precious day. We thank you for another opportunity to be of service here on this earth. We ask that you come within this meeting, clean up our hearts and our minds, that we have your guidance, our wisdom and knowledge, that we may do what is best for all the citizens of the city of Florence, that we may be good neighbors to all those who are surrounding us. So we welcome you into this meeting today. Please have your way and we thank you for your presence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, if you take a look at our agenda, first we have approval of our minutes. Our minutes from April 24th, 2023 workshop and minutes from May 8th, 2023 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Some of the second.
We have a motion in second and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye and opposed like sign. Council, also at this time, we do have two addendums. The first addendum is introduction of our bill number 2023-25 and the next is introduction of resolution number 2023-34. Can we have a motion to add these items to the agenda? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, city fathers saying aye.
Aye.
The two items will be added to our agenda. Also, if there's no objections, we do have individuals and groups present for our resolutions. So if there's no objection, I would like to move our introduction of resolution forward onto our agenda to follow after our appearance before council. Hearing none, okay, and if there's no objection, we'll move it forward to our appearance after council. At this time, we proceed with our agenda as outlined. At this time, we have a public hearing and I declare this public hearing open. It's a public hearing will be held to receive input on the state of Florence's fiscal year budget from 2023-2024. We have Mr. Kevin Rollin here. Do we have any questions or input from the audience? Hearing none, the public hearings now called to a close. Next, we will proceed with our appearance before council. We will ask that each group, our member who come forward, please contain your presentation to a five-minute presentation. First, we have Ms. Yolanda Echols. He's here to introduce the Beacon of Light Institute for Veterans. Ms. Echols, would you please come forward?
Thank you for having me. First, I want to do acknowledgement, thanking the mayor, Urban, for having me and all the rest of the county councilmen and women here. My name is Dr. Yolanda Holmes-Echols. I am the founder and the president of the Beacon of Light Institute for Veterans. I felt that it was very important for me to come to the city county council to introduce our 501(c)(3) nonprofit since we are starting to do more community work here in Florence. I want to give everybody a history, a background of how the Beacon of Light came about. Beacon of Light came about due to me and my sister seeing my father suffer from PTSD post-Vietnam. And the way that we saw him suffer from it encouraged us and motivated us to want to do something very necessary to help other women and men veterans here in Florence and the surrounding communities and other states and abroad. So that's how the Beacon of Light came about. Again, my name is Dr. Yolanda Holmes-Echols and my sister is Dr. Tamika Pierre-Louis. I want to go over our mission. Next slide. The mission for the Beacon of Light is to help women and men veterans, also their families. Although we are veterans-centered, our future services will be made accessible to all first and emergency responders because we know that majority, if not all of our first and emergency responders are former or current military members. Our mission also is to enhance the quality of their lives and our vision is that we're striving to heal, to put the pieces of their lives back together again. Next slide. We have an upcoming event. I passed out and packing. Slide to everyone of the council members here. I do have flyers just in case someone want one. We are having our upcoming Free Community Event, August 26th here at Freedom Forest Park. This will be our third annual Free Community Event. I felt the need because of what we've seen, a lot of tumultuous horrific things going on in the public and around the world, which is melted health center. It goes back to the melted health. So I decided that we're going to carry on our theme from last year into 2023, which is your thoughts do matter. So this will be incorporated in this, we will have a softball, soft pitch benefit tournament that we have every year. We are encouraging the general public to come out and register. You do not have to be a veteran. You do not have to be a first or emergency responder to participate. We are encouraging more women and co-ed teams to come out and play. Please help us get this information out. I will be having a lot of veterans service organizations that will be coming from Columbia and other surrounding areas that are going to be having information accessible to veterans as far as helping with their claims, if they need information about getting their benefits or anything that they may need help with, or if you know someone who needs help, we will have other organizations out there on site. Also, we will again have this annual softball tournament. We will also have good food out there so you can eat. We are inviting everyone to come out and help us celebrate our heroes, which are our veterans and our first and emergency responders. Next slide. Thank you so very much for allowing me to come before the council and to introduce the Beacon of Light Institute for Veterans. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you, doctor. And once again, if they want to get in contact with you, they can go to your website direct and that website is www.bolv.r.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much, doctor. We appreciate that presentation and thank you for all that you're doing to assist the veterans. We appreciate it. Also, next we have coming for our council is Dr. John Bruce to request consideration for a strengthening of our dog ordinance. Dr. Bruce, please come forward.
Thank y'all for allowing me to speak today, just as Jane possible when she's going to answer any questions that you may have about this. I heard her talk once and the speaker said you can't really make any progress unless you feel a little bit uncomfortable and that's exactly how I feel right now before you. But let's get to it. Today, I'm here to talk to you about passing an ordinance to protect citizens from dangerous dogs. It was about a year ago, we had an incident on our street where a small dog was killed and a young woman could have been injured. It attacked him for some neighbors who ran out and brought the dogs off. One of the neighbors is here today and it was a serious thing. They said, you can imagine how bad it could be and then multiply that by two and you still may not have how bad it is. These were large dogs. They weren't pit bulls. They were much bigger than that. And it was a very serious thing. The veterinarians said, please call the police about it. They did an investigation, dog owners, the dog owner's wife was known and they called her and gave her a verbal warning not to do it again. That is due to our laws. That's due to our weak ordinance right there. Later on in other weeks, they would escape and run after children in the street as well as adults if they had a dog on a leash. This has gone on now for one and a half years and every time the owner is fined only $100 and the dogs are picked up only to be released to the owner and they attack again. Today, they're still there. We still have the same problem. But the reason I'm telling you this background story is this. Number one, our laws are too weak to fine a person who is responsible for $100 indefinitely when he is advertised that the dogs could kill for $5,000 apiece will not work. My friend, good friend, Judge Ralph Anderson said, please look at the Richmond County ordinance. It calls for a $600 fine and/or 30 days in jail for every day that occurrence happens. I am definitely not criticizing our police. They've done a great job here. They just don't have the law to stop it. We live in a different time where people openly flaunt society and safety that can't be stopped and they must be stopped unless. Number two, an animal control officer must be given more power to assist the police in stopping these people. They can work with the police or independently of the police to take in people that dare us to touch them. Number three, please consider licensing these people who breed pets for sale. You would filter out people like this and also fees could possibly be used to fund the shelter, stay and new clinic. A dog will do just about anything for his owner if he's trained and no man should train that dog to hurt or kill. That is why we must have these rules in place to punish people and we must do it now. Thank you for your hard work.
I do want to acknowledge, Dr. Bruce, that the items that was added today was bill number 2023-2025 and it's extra ordinance, our bill that was strengthening our dog ordinance. And we did have, I do want to acknowledge that each one of the council member from District 1, 2, and 3 did work together to create this ordinance. So it will be on there and we, some of the things you mentioned will be addressed in there and we will introduce it and if the council accept, it will be one that we'll introduce, but we'll also look at other things in the future to even enhance it more.
Thank you very much.
Do any of the council have any questions? If not, thank you, Dr. Bruce. Jane?
Yeah, I'd love to add something to it. I think there's nobody that speaks out more for animals than me and I love, I know that y'all hear a lot of voices from a lot of different people in the community and I feel like you, me with the Yuma Society, we speak for those that don't have a voice, the animals that are out there. And they certainly form a wonderful bond for children and for people. But I do think that in our community right now, and it's not just here, but we are seeing an overpopulation of animals. It's not only a community crisis, it's a statewide crisis and it's a national crisis. And it's resulted from the lack of any kind of licensing laws or spay neuter laws. And I think we are long overdue for that. I think that this would be an opportune time to take a look at that because I think, as Dr. Bruce said, I think breeding has gotten out of control and I think with the, if you go out to our shelter, we're totally overwhelmed. I have dogs out at our rescue barn. We're begging rescues to take them and they're overwhelmed. I think a little bit, it's a bit of an embarrassment that we send animals to other locations who have licensing laws and they have got control of their own population. I just think, you know, I love the fact that you have pushed forward this agenda of full forward, that we are a progressive community and I think we just got to step up to that. I think that the thing that could happen is that your licensing could help fund spay neuter, which is in desperate need and we have so many people that ask for our help and we do what we can, but I just think it's time that it's a combined approach. I think the fact that our animal control officers really have no official power, I think we honestly need to consider that they become at least class three officers. I know that Ori County is moving to class, where they're class one officers because you are sending them sometimes into dangerous situations where guns are involved. We all know that with the selling of certain breeds of dogs and the dog fighting, that there's dangerous things that go on, drugs and other, definitely a lot of gun power. So I do think that this is a huge umbrella and I do appreciate that y'all have the guts to address it. You know, we are definitely supportive of all that you do and we're thankful that you represent our community so well.
Jane, before you leave, I do want to let you know that a part of the ordinance that we'll be introducing today will be looking at some of those concerns that you have and we have evaluated for looking at having some of our officers step into that space. I do want to be aware of that and some of the things that you addressed, it's going to be ongoing. We have this introduction today, but we're also contingent to look at how we can improve it. At this time, I would like to recognize Councilman Jabea.
First off, thank you so much. You know, as a family that has two dogs at our house, I mean, and so many dog lovers out there, you know, the work that you do is in the background. It's a quiet side and most people are not, they don't encounter what all you do, but on behalf of our community, thank you, thank you, and thank you for what you do. By any chance, have you had an opportunity to review? And I know it's just been drafted and it's like freshly done, the ordinance. Have you had an opportunity to look at it?
I've looked at Richmond's, but I'm not sitting here wanting to.
What I would ask of our city manager, Randy, if you and our city attorney, Ben Ziegler, if y'all would share that with Jane and then I think it would be helpful, Jane and Dr. Bruce, if there was some review of what we're looking at and, you know, if it, because you have to have two readings. So even if we pass first reading today, if we need to make some adjustments to it, I think the input would be very helpful, at least for me, speaking for myself, I would appreciate having y'all's input into it if that's something that can be done. Randy, is that something we can do?
In case.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate you and all that you do and your input would be very much appreciated.
Well, I thank you and I think, you know, Brian probably understands this as well as anybody, that sometimes an animal is the only friend a child has or someone that has nothing else to come to. And so I just, I want to look at it very objectively, you know, there are some, and just like you address all the time, there are good things in our community and there are things that need improvement. So I'd love to balance that out.
Thank you for your help and ongoing assistance. Thank you.
Thanks. Just a moment, please. We do have two council members who wants to speak. We first acknowledge Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson, followed by Councilwoman, then Councilman Brad.
I want to say that I was one of the council members working on this dog ordinance because we had a lot of complaints and we had a lot of incidences with dogs. And so, Dr. Bruce, everything that you, one, two, and three, you'll find that we have addressed those things because we see those things as well and we see what's happening in our communities and we want to go to more, towards a more pedestrian-friendly city so we know we have to kind of get these dogs under control. So this will be our first, but we will continue to review the dog ordinances going along. But I think we nailed everything, but this time, what do you think, Brian? Councilman Smith?
I think we nailed it for you guys.
Yeah, well, I also want to say it is a part, part one of a two-part process. We're looking at the strengthening of our dog ordinance, but then also at the business aspect of the licensing, license and registration of the animal. So there will be some follow-up. And also wanted to say, Dr. Bruce, thank you for coming out today. I know, like you said, this was, this incident was 18 months ago and it's taken us a while to get to this point to present an ordinance, but you know, we wanted to definitely make sure that all of Florence was represented and you know, when you're dealing with people's pets, we needed to take a very thorough approach. And so it's taken us a while to get here, but I think we got to a place that's going to be very helpful. I have, I have a pound puppy and a pound cat and a cat that ended up in the backyard and became one of our pets. So I appreciate what you do.
I thought Ross would do more.
I'm sure we'll have some more in the future, but thank you very much.
And thank you again for coming forth. And I do want to acknowledge even to the general public, the incident that occurred when it first occurred, our city manager staff was really focused upon doing all they could do to address the issue. But even with that, from that staff and along with the city started working on it, but finally we had our three council members from the different district who came together. And it's important because each one of the areas of the cities had some incidents when it came to pass. So thank you for everyone and just as stated, this is the first reading, but they did an excellent job of putting it together and Casey will have it out, but also it'll be a matter of our public record, so everyone take a look at it. I believe that anything we pass is always a living grieving document and so there'll be times when we're going to need to update it to where our present circumstances are. But thank you again for always being mindful and Jane, I know you've been on the battlefield for several years. So thank you too for your ongoing efforts. We appreciate that. Next we have, and forgive me if I pronounce Mr. Carl, if I pronounce your name wrong, Mr. Carl Slicks.
Slick.
All right. Because I was smiling, because I was reading, I want to be sorry to get that right, but he's coming forward to request consideration of a speed bump on Park Avenue.
First off. Start my time clock.
Okay, thank you.
First off, I want to say another gratitude. You still pray in the Pledge of Allegiance means more to me than I see out there, other counties, other states, other cities are going in the toilet because they first lost who's our leader. As a humble little child of God, living on Park Avenue for over 20 years, I consistently see speeders, some of them, I was told there's a speed bump right there at the Jewish Temple, Pine Street. It's a very loose term as a speed bump and I saw somebody at 70 clear the ground. It's just too dangerous and I know when I talked to the state, yes, that's the South Carolina Department of Transport, they said, oh, it has become a political matter. I said, well, let's, when it's your child, let it down. It's no longer a political matter. I would like to see about the speed bumps put in and what do we have to do as a group of people to protect each other and ourselves? We have some grave driving atrocities we see all the time. On Cherokee about three years ago, I was passed on a double yellow by UPS driver. You know all our works there? If, I mean, there's no, I've driven tractor trailers from 46 out of 48 states in Eastern Canada and whether, no, but most people here can't fathom, but I always drove safe and there's no reason for driving eight hundred, we'll say. With that said, I thank you very much for your time and if y'all need my name and number, contact me to see how we can get speed bumps put in. If you want, I can get, I'll personally go up and down Park Avenue because I've asked several residents, those strangers that don't know me, are you appreciating the speed on this street? And they all blanch. Because we've all had close calls. Close calls only come up so often. Anyway, I'm at 2:40. We'll call it a day. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Next we have coming before us, the Reverend Marvin Hemingway, chairperson for the PD Youth Initiative, to speak on PD Youth Day.
I also would like to say thank you for the mayor of the city council for allowing me this time to speak to the city of Florence. I have flyers about the district for the council and I also have flyers to do here for members here at the meeting. The PD Youth Initiative, this is our press release that we gave out on May 27th. Officers and members and the board of directors of the PD Youth Initiative would like to announce to the PD area of South Carolina, their first annual PD Youth Initiative scheduled for Saturday, July 8th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 513th Bond Street, which is the Bond Street Activity Center and 200 Sandborne Street, which is the city center farmers market. We'll have activities in both those buildings and in between the buildings. The theme for this prestigious event is focus on your future. This initiative will promote a peaceful and safe living environment, not only for the youth, but also for their parents and their community. Our children today face challenging circumstances and risks associated with drug, alcohol and tobacco use, juvenile crime and delinquency, suicide, teen pregnancy, school dropout, domestic violence, sexual abuse and gang activities, bullying, broken families and peer pressure and as well, it also has a big problem with mental health issues. So the PD Youth Initiative met and we have people from all of the PD area gathered together with the board and Mayor Urban was elected and announced as the board of directors chair. The mayor from Lake City is the board vice chair and we've had great meetings. We're working every two weeks, getting events, getting people to come together to help with this initiative for the youth of the community. People say that our youth are the future and tomorrow, but the youth are ours now. We need to work with them for them to be able to know what is going on in city council meetings, know how to dress for meetings, know how to dress for jobs. So we're going to have different activities for our youth on that day. There will be free food, free activities. We also have high school supplies given out and on this flight, it'll give you all the information. Telephone numbers to call if you want to be a part of this great event. So I thank you again for this time to speak to the city of Florence.
Thank you. Next we have coming before us will be Ms. Mandy Taylor, district manager for Duke Energy, to present to the city of Florence, the Duke Energy Emergency Preparedness and Storm Resiliency Grant.
Excuse me. Thank you, mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Last year, the Duke Energy Foundation introduced the Emergency Preparedness and Storm Resiliency Grant Program and it was very successful. When you think about it, those are the types of programs that we need to be supporting in the communities that we serve. And because of its success, we announced the same grant cycle this year. The Duke Energy Foundation provided $500,000 worth of grants to 32 different organizations across the state to support their emergency preparedness efforts. And today, I'm pleased to announce that the city of Florence is the recipient of yet another grant for this emergency preparedness cycle in the amount of $20,000 to help you all purchase some emergency equipment.
I tried to get Shanna to speak for us there. He's so camera shy, but I would like, first I would like to thank Duke Energy for all that they do to reinvest in the community and many thank you for the years that you've been. And many, thank you for the years that you've been with them, always being able to communicate with the city and to assist us. So we'd like to thank you for that grant because it'll do great things here in the city to make things better for everyone. We appreciate everything that you and Duke does for our community. Thank you. So at this time, we did have, um, a change in, um, agenda. We are moving our resolution forward. So first, we have introduction of resolution. First one is resolution number 2023-31. It's a resolution of recognition of the consignment of Ms. Jollette Law. Do we have a motion?
So move second.
We have a motion, it's second, any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and also?
Excuse me. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Sure.
And the amendment that I'd like to make to the resolution is to, in addition to the recognition that, uh...
Excuse me, council, let me do this without, since we broke, it's already passed. I want to be sure we do this.
Well, they can stop for the, it was completed.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to be sure here.
So, uh, in addition to the recognition presented in the resolution, I had a conversation with Councilman Smith, who is proposing this resolution. And in addition to that, what I'd like to propose is that our championship basketball court at the Pearlmore Center be named the Jollette Law Championship Court.
Second. So we have a motion, it's second, any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So now we have amended resolution, we have amended resolution, which will now recognize the accomplishment of Ms. Jollette Law. We're amending that to state that the champion court, championship court at our basketball center will be renamed for Ms. Jollette Law. That is the new motion. All those, were any discussion? So first, we have a motion for that, and we need to vote on it now. All the, give me a motion.
So move second.
Yeah, because we didn't pass the first one, correct? So any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign. Let it be stated, the amended resolution has been adopted. We will still move forward with the presentation of today's resolution. And we will ask that Ms. Jollette Law and any who is a contributor, please come forward. We'll ask that Councilman, um, Smith, please go forward to present. And afterwards, um, Law, if you so desire, you will welcome to come forth and give some words. Let's get y'all to shift, shift to the center. Man, they want to get a picture, a picture of you there together. Ms. Law, do you want to make a statement?
Wow, I wasn't expecting this, but first, I want to give out a device. It was the head of my life. And, um, I just wish my mom and my dad were here and they're looking down on me right now. Um, it gives me great honor to represent the city of Florence. And for all those that helped me to be Brian today. I never really lost a word, but right now, this is, it's a lot. I just want to thank you guys so much for, um, just recognizing all the work that I've put in. It wasn't about me, it was always about all the people here and putting Florence on the map. So I'm truly grateful, truly honored. Um, I continue to represent Florence on this does matter. Thank you.
And before you leave, Slough, we do have a couple of council members who want to, um, address. We want to recognize Councilman Jubayla, then Councilman Lee Smith-Jackson, then Councilwoman Barnes, and then Councilman, uh, Smith. In that order, please.
So first off, um, thank you for all that you do. And, uh, and I'll just put as a side note, as a two-time, uh, University of South Carolina graduate, thank you for what you're currently doing for, for the game guard basketball program. I wish the men's program was as equally successful. But I would ask Councilman Smith to just highlight in, that's in the resolution, some of your incredible accomplishments that you've had, um, over the years. Because I want our whole population to know just how much you have done and how much you have accomplished on a national scale and how blessed and fortunate we are to have you as a representative of our great community. And I think, um, I can't wait for the, for the day when that, your name gets down there on that basketball court and we'll be able to have that celebration of that. So it is all well-earned and deserved on your part. And we just greatly, greatly appreciate all that you have done and continue to do.
Before we proceed, we're going to order Ms. Lee Smith-Jackson, then Ms. Barnes, then Barnes.
Congratulations, baby. You worked so hard. You've done that, you've made us proud. You got me almost in here crying. Um, because I know what this means to you. You worked hard, you deserve it. Congratulations. Anything that we can do, we are here. You know, you put us on the map back when you was with the Globetrotters, you know what I mean? So we, we've been following you, we've been cheering for you, for you, and we're here for you. We love you, baby.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm excited. We, we, we go way back because it's another cousin, Chiquis. And I, um, I, well, anyway, um, I am so excited. I was also a team member with this young lady. And I thought my senior year, I was gonna be the bomb.com. And, and she and Too Sexy came and gave us a run for our money. But you have never failed to impress. You've never failed to make us proud every step of the way. And I am so, so proud to, to have you represent Florence, represent family, and more than anything, your biggest champion, your brother Terry Law. Your brother Terry Law out there, I mean, he like, don't y'all forget my sister. But we are so, so proud of you. And, um, I know Bebe Law and, and your mom is so, so proud of you. And we are too.
Councilman Smith, would you take a few moments just to do the quick highlights?
So I'm just gonna do a quick highlight of, um, the, of my cousin, the Jollette Law. Uh, Jollette was a Wilson High School graduate, a two-time MVP, a three-sport athlete at Wilson High School. Jollette went to Iowa University, where she won four consecutive Big Ten championships. And is also in the Iowa Athletic Hall of Fame. Um, she's coached for 28 years professionally. And had had careers at Tennessee, Illinois, Rutgers, Ball State, and now the University of South Carolina. She is, has also been inducted into the Step Up Assistant Coaches Hall of Fame in the class of 2020. And with five seasons with the South Carolina Gamecoats, she has collected two SEC regular, regular season championships, two NCAA Final Four appearances, and the 2022 National Championship. She is, she has brought in two, excuse me, three, top, top three, uh, number one classes to the University of South Carolina. And now, as we all know, she is one of the top assistants and one of the top recruiters in the nation. So again, I thank you, and, oh, the bigger highlight, I'm sorry. She is also a Florence Hall of Fame, uh, Florence Hall of Fame Class of 2006 inductee. And also a, is honored as Florence School District Award Distinguished Graduate. And also has her jersey retired at Wilson High School. Thank you so much for all of your work.
And Slough, please don't leave yet. He's here.
Uh, thank you. At a very young age, I remember eight, I was like six or seven. He believed in me, and, um, we traveled running track. It wasn't basketball, it was track. But thank you for just pushing me and believing in me even when I didn't even know that thought was out there. You provided some things for us at the city, at the city recreation department. And, uh, it took me all over the world. And I'm truly grateful. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Nick Chacois McCall.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give him last, but that's fine. Um, just want to, again, thank you on your accomplishment. Um, I had to say something, my brother Chipper had read in the resolutions, and he's saying all the accomplishments you had at USC. And he's a big Clemson fan. But continue to do what you're doing. Uh, the leadership that you're showing to those young women and back to people who watch you here in Florence is tremendous. Um, you're a beacon of hope to a lot of young girls and a lot of young men as well, looking to starting coaching. And, um, you've made, your successful track record, um, is something for them to look forward to. And, um, again, thank you, and, uh, continue to win some national championships for us.
And I would simply add to Ms. Jollette, thank you for all that you do. And I know with Dr. Law in the ordinance, a lot of things have been said about the acclamation. But I think about Ms. Curly Law. And so when I think about the community, and I think about you being a part of other community, but you've always represented us well on every level. So we thank you for who you are and for whom you came. But more importantly, for where you're going and how you'll continue to carry that light, to shine for us. Thank you, and know that you always have our support. And, you know, everyone, and they think about Law, thank God, Ms. Curly Law. So thank you for all that you do. And we truly honor you because you do it and you do it so humbly. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I think, yeah, she's gonna prepare to leave because she got a camp to go back to today, tune everything. So she's still working, y'all. So next, we're gonna move forward with our, um, resolutions. Next, we have resolution number 2023-32. It's a resolution to proclaim June 19th through 25th, 2023 as National Pollinator Week in the city of Florence. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion, it's second, any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign. Next, we have resolution number 2023-33. It's a resolution to proclaim June as homeownership month. Do we have a motion?
So move second.
We have a motion, it's second. Here, is there any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And at this time, I was called for Representative for, uh, Realtors Association. Chair recognizes Councilman Jubayla.
Before she leaves, I did want to recognize my beautiful niece, Julia. Thank you for coming, Julia.
She's heading out, but she's got to go to do some continuous education there to keep her career going. Y'all take care. Next we have, uh, which was added through, added through our resolutions. We have resolution number 2023-34. It's a resolution recognizing, resolution of recognition of the contribution of divine acts of kindness in the city of Florence. Do we have a motion?
So move second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And at this time, we would like to ask that Ms. Gloria Jones, please come forward. And I'm gonna ask that Councilwoman Lee Smith-Jackson proceed down to present this to Ms. Gloria.
Lady, this Gloria is here now. The one thing I have to say is that I'm willing to serve out through your heart. Um, Gloria, divine acts of kindness has been an integral part of my community when it comes to our kids, uh, serving and becoming a mentor, giving back to them. We just did a feeding last, we did a feeding last Saturday. I just gave eight little girls, and it was good. But, um, giving back, and her words are nothing, uh, her community. We've been doing this for a long time. We have not failed. Even when folks came at you and tried to do everything, we kept going. Thank you for all you do for this town.
Gloria, I'll actually just say something. Because she's, she's, I, I would definitely want her to speak because she's, a lot of people don't know half of the things that Gloria do. And I always say Gloria, not Ms. John, because she's been an advocate for children in the school system and everywhere. She's been one of those quiet voices that's really a loud voice. But she does it so gracefully. So please.
Thank you for the recognition. Um, my name is Ms. Gloria C.L. Jones. I'm a proud citizen of Florence, South Carolina. I did start Divine Act of Kindness because I wanted to lead by a good example in my community for others to see what a divine act of kindness is. Um, my nonprofit organization is a 501(c)(3). We do give back to the community free school supplies, um, hygiene products, household items, um, a Christmas program that we do at the end of the year where we give to the elderly, to, uh, individuals, um, to families. Um, and we just go into neighborhoods where they may not be able to reach the other nonprofits that are doing events. We actually go into the neighborhoods. We go into different communities that they are able to walk to us, they're able to drive to us, and to share information about things that we're doing throughout the, um, the year. I want to thank you all for this recognition. I am proud to continue to give back to my community. I love Florence, South Carolina, and I love our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have reports to the council, starting with the ordinance. Yeah, we would need to step back. Trying to move us forward, y'all. That's right. Okay, now we're back to ordinance and positions. The first bill we have is bill number 2023-17 for a second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the city to extend a lease on the real estate known as 228 West Darlington Street and designated as Florence County Tax Map Parceling Number 90086-02-004 to PD Regional Transportation Authorities under the terms and conditions set, uh, in a written lease attached as Exhibit A to this ordinance.
So move second.
I got a question, ma'am. Um, what is in this, this storage area that, um, they're releasing to the PDRT?
I want to ask the city manager to come forward.
So they just didn't have use of it, but there's not?
We were using it. Uh, but we are not in need of it. It would be much more beneficial to expand the transit center that would, for a little bit of storage is there.
So once we, um, pass this, when would they take possession of it?
Well, they've already had, they already have possession of the majority of it. They were, as soon as they get their, their federal grant, and they will proceed with, uh, very mild of them.
Is there any other discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign. Next, we have bill number 2023-18 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annex in Zone 136 Wilson Road, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 90097-1-022. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, it's second, any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign. Thus, we have bill number 2023-19 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to adopt the city of Florence 2020 Comprehensive Plan and city of Florence 2020 Downtown Master Plan. Do we have a motion in the second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign. Thus, we have completed our ordinance imposition. Next, we are entering to the introduction of ordinance. First, we have... First we have bill number 2023 dash 21 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for the City of Florence, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, ending June 30th, 2024. Do we have a motion in the?
Motion, some more second.
We have a motion in the second. At this time, we are here from Mr. Rowley.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're presenting the city manager's proposed budget for the year beginning July 1st, 2023, ending on June 30th, 2024. The proposed budget, the total proposed budget is $115,246,530. The general fund being the largest component of that. The general fund is the main operating system for the city. It includes things like fire, police, public work, sanitation, and administration. The budget comes with a proposed five mil increase in order to balance the budget. Five mils would take us from a total of 63.1 mils, which is currently, which is the current million, to 68.1 mils. That would be a $20 increase on the cost of, on the taxes of a $100,000 home. However, that is net of our low cost of sales tax credit. So it will take it down to about $17. With the 68.1, this is where the city would fall among several of our other cities around the state. There are 17 listed. So we are 14th out of this list. However, I will tell you, I read that easily has proposed their budget up to 69 and a half mils, which would drop us down one, which is where we were before the change. This is the net increase when we calculate in the current low cost of sales tax credit. We are at 27.4 mils, which is 16 out of 17 there, with only easily in this group below us. So the general fund budget, general fund budget is $48,661,500. The two largest components are property taxes and business license, which make up about 60%, over 60% of the budget. We calculated a 3% increase in property tax and business license, we said about 6.3 million dollars. The expenditures, again, this is a balanced budget. So we have 48,661,500. And public work, public safety, which is fire and police, make up the largest percentage, which is 40.2. The one thing I want to point out, we'll go back to slide. One thing I want to point out is we used $155,000 of fund balance in order to balance our budget. The state law requires we have a balanced budget and that's, that is an accepted way of balancing the budget. For the enterprise funds, which are water and sewer and stormwater funds, we have a combined total of $50,296,730 for the budget. The current use charges, which in water and sewer makes up 91% or 92% of the budget there. And that is the presentation.
Do we have any discussion? Here none, all?
We, I'd like to propose an amendment to the budget. The amendment I'd like to propose is in the section dealing with community programs. And what I propose is three changes to the programming that's presented. In light of the CDVG funding that was done last month where the, my brother's keeper got 20,000. I'd like to show a 10,000 amount here, which would be a total of 30,000 when you add in the CDVG money that was gotten before. So that wouldn't be an adjustment to show 10,000 there for my brother's keeper. And then where they had the No One Unsheltered, they got 25,000 out of the CDVG and like to show a, them getting 68,800 here. And then under the Florence Family Support Center, then getting 3,000. Those three changes in what has been presented in the budget. And if my math is correct, and Kevin, you can tell me if my math is correct, that is a total of $22,000. Is that right?
I think you're 28,000.
If I'm, if my math is right, the, there's a $10,000 gain in the My Brother's Keeper, is that right? And then there's a $6,200 gain in the No One Unsheltered?
Yes.
And then there's a $5,800 gain?
3,000. From, it's going to 5,800. Current is 800.
It was 5,800 down to 3,000 or was it 8,800?
Oh, you're taking 2, 3,000.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So then is the math right?
Yes, your math is right.
Okay, so that's a total of 22,000?
Yes.
Okay. And so then with the 22,000, I propose adding funding for GLAB at 15,000, adding funding for Helping Florence Flourish at 1,200, and then adding funding for the Leatherman Senior Center at 5,800, which I believe if that's? The Leatherman Senior Center, 5,800. So if I'm, if my math is right, again, y'all check me on my math, but if the math is right, that's your total of 22,000. The same 22 that we made the previous, the earlier adjustment. Is that right, Kevin? 15 for GLAB, 1,200 for Helping Florence Flourish, and 5,800 for the Leatherman Senior Center. My math is right, that's 22,000. That's the amendment that I proposed.
For the record, so that would be clear to state in your record. Mr. Rowley, when you get those numbers, could you please restate those numbers as given so we'll have a clear amendment to the motion so we'll have it correct for the record?
Well, I can go ahead and read that out. So?
I think he's typing for us, George, just give him one moment and then he can look at you.
All right, I'll go ahead and, once he's ready, I'll read those numbers out so that my motion would be accurate. You ready, Kevin?
What would your number for?
So, I'll read through those. So the new number for Help for No One Unsheltered would be 68,800. The new number for the Florence Family Support Center would be 3,000. The new number for My Brother's Keeper would be 10,000. Then the adding in the other additional ones, GLAB would be 15,000. Helping Florence Flourish would be 1,200 and Leatherman Senior Center, 5,800. And I'm not great enough, but I hope it's right.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so the math is right, so that's my.
Kevin, please read those changes into record, please. So this is going to be the motion. Will you please read those numbers into this motion so we have it correct?
So we have Boys and Glories Club at 20,000. The Transit System, which is PDRTA, at 218,000. The PD Red Cross is 10,000. Keep Florence Beautiful is 5,000. No One Unsheltered is going to be 68,800. The Florence Family Support Center, $3,000. Foster Care Clothing Closet is $7,000. PD Coalition is 5,000. GLAB is 15,000. The Leatherman Senior Center is 5,800. And, I'm sorry, yes, 5,800. And Helping Florence Flourish is 1,200.
If I'm not mistaken, the?
Oh, My Brother's Keeper is at 10,000.
Okay, you have the information, correct information for the amendment to the motion. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion as amended signify by saying aye. Aye, in opposed like sign. Here none, in all, in favor, let it reflect that the bill has passed as amended. Next we will move to bill number 2023 dash 2022 for first reading. It's an ordinance to amend Article 4 of Chapter 2, specifically Section 2 dash 206 of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance Amending that designated areas to include the East Florence Corridor, East?
Point order, Madam Mayor. I think we both did not vote on the budget after we did the amendment, now we got to turn around and vote on it.
Yeah, we got, we amended it.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're going to vote on the amended version with the numbers as stated. All those, do we have that motion?
Some more.
Some motion in the second. Any discussion? Here no, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, in opposed like sign. Let it reflect that our first reading has passed on our budget. Next we have bill number 2023 dash 2022 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to amend Article 4, Chapter 2, specifically Section 2 dash 206 of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance Amending the designated area to include the East Palmetto Corridor within the municipal limits. Do we have a motion? We have a motion in the second and a discussion. At this time, we are here from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is an ordinance to amend Article 4 of Chapter 2, specifically Section 2 dash 206 of the City Code to include the East Palmetto Corridor within the designated areas that will create the mechanism for grant funding in the future. And this is the added language that will be amended to the City Code. We will be establishing the boundary, which is the abutting properties along the right way of East Palmetto from South Church, and I'll have a visual here after this, after this slide. From Church Street to Old Mars Bluff, we have established a window of funding between 5,000 and 20,000 being the maximum. The property owner will have to match that funding with their improvements. The, this grant will only be available to commercial developments. And this is an effort to support those goals and initiatives outlined within the Comprehensive Plan, within the US 76 Corridor Study, and all the previous plans we've conducted for the city of Florence. And this is a quick visual of those properties that abut the East Palmetto Corridor within municipal limits.
Okay. Chair recognizes councilman.
First off, thank you so much. And just so the public know, this is the extension of our gateway that we have been doing already in some areas. And now we're looking out to the outer gateways coming in and out of Florence. And it's vitally important, just then, if you look at what's happened in downtown by the creation of the overlay districts and the improvements and the financial assistance that's given, you've seen this transformation that's happened in downtown. And now it's an extension out. And I know that this is something our business committee has been looking at, these corridors and gateways. And it's my hope, Mr. Moore, that this will continue with our other gateways that we have in and around our city. But this is a very important one, particularly in light of the improvements that have been made over at Levi Park and what we hope will be forthcoming as a future. If I'm, if my reading of the map is correct, the road that you're referring to, the Old Mars Bluff Road, is to the east of Levi Park.
That's correct.
So it would include all of the improvements that we've already made over Levi Park as well as the ones that we hope will be forthcoming. Is that right? Okay, thank you.
Chair recognizes councilman.
And I want to add for the, I want to definitely applaud you all for bringing this to Councilor Lordon. I think this is a great opportunity we have to capitalize on. But again, I do want to, for us not to neglect other corridors as well. The North Irving Corridor has been one that has been, one that has been felt as it was neglected. So I will love for you all to definitely look at that corridor as well. And I'd love to have that discussion in a later date for us to vote on. And I think, I think if we're going to do one side, I think we need to look at all corridors and try to make sure that we're being fair, equitable, and inclusive to all sides of the city of Florence. Thank you.
And just at this point, I would like to thank you, Mr. Moore, for getting that together. And I know that there's been some ongoing discussion that we've been having about this area. And I also want to foster that effect. And one of the good things about extending this corridor is because we do have our 76 Gateway Study where we as a city is working with the county to improve the zoning from our line of Omar Bluff out to past Francis Marion University. So by doing this, this would now extend that area from our downtown, from Irving on out to have a congruent connection even all the way out through our college. So once again, this is a great action. And as stated with the councilman, that as we're improving one section, we will continue to expand the footprint of overlays so we can continue to improve not only how our downtown area looks, but also how these areas feed into our communities. And we will do that throughout our city. So thank you again for that. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, in opposed like sign. Please let it know that bill number 2023 dash 2023 has passed, excuse that, 2023 dash 2022 has passed first reading. Next we will move forward with bill number 2023 dash 2023 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to annex Phase 4 of the Grove at Ebeneze, identified as portions of the Florence County Tax Map Number 00075 dash year 1 dash 221. Do we have a motion?
Some more.
Do we have a motion in the second? We're here for Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is the annexation of Phase 4 of the Grove. This is part of the development agreement that we went in with the developer back in 2016. So as the developer proposes the future phases, they are required to bring those properties in. This is a quick, quick map of that area. It is, as you can see, the majority of the plan development is already located within the city limits. This is one of the last phases. They are currently, I believe homes are being constructed in this last phase right now. This is the added area that will be annexed into the city, including the rail trail extension that will connect to the soccer complex. Again, the public hearings for all of these annexations occurred with the development agreement and the initial annexation request back in 2016. So from this point forward, as they annex, we simply bring them to council for that.
Chair recognizes councilman.
Would you pull that map up again and just show us where the rail trail ends right now and then how it would extend in relationship particularly to where the soccer complex is?
Yes, so the rail trail is actually quite a bit off the map here. Yes, so the, the rail trail is actually, it's quite a bit off the map here. Uh, it will, uh, it essentially ends at the Emergency Response Building, uh, that you see on Ebenezer Road. Uh, the sidewalk connector will bring it up to, you can see this small map here, uh, the corner of Pine Needles and Ebenezer. Uh, there is a rail trail or a old rail corridor that exists. Uh, we currently own a portion of that, and then we will, uh, be closing on the remainder portion, uh, here. Hopefully, and will tie it on over to the Soccer Complex.
In the bigger image, can you see where it extends?
So, it will, essentially, uh, it's off the map here, uh, but it will run along this corridor that exists, and then down and across the floor.
By the power line.
Just right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next, we'll have Bill number 2023 dash 24 for first reading. It's an ordinance to amend Section Number 8 dash 3 of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance to allow fireworks on private property on July the 4th through the 5th, and December the 31st through January the 1st in the City of Florence. Do we have a motion?
Some more.
Thank you.
Let's have a motion in the second. At this time, we're here for Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Uh, this ordinance is being sponsored by Councilman McCall. Uh, as you know, the City of Florence does not require, does not allow fireworks in the city limits. Uh, there is a request to allow fireworks on two dates. Uh, that's July 4th, and that will start at 10:00 a.m., and it will end at 12:30 a.m., and then on, uh, July 5th, and then also on December 31st. Fireworks in the city limits can start at 10:00 a.m. They would have to end at 12:30 a.m. on January 1st. This is only on private property. Uh, this is not anywhere on public property in the City of Florence.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill, the bill has passed first reading. Next, we'll move into, to our next bill, which... Go ahead.
Sorry. Your next one, I'm sorry, I know you meant to...
Okay. Alright, next, we have, um, the bill that was added by Denim, which would be Bill number 2023 dash 2025. And it's an ordinance to repeal and replace sections, portions of Section Number 3 dash 2, 3 dash 7, and 3 dash 11 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Florence entitled Definitions, Public Nuisance, Dangerous and Vicious Animals Enforcement, and Other Matters Relating There To... Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Try again, second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Just to state that this was something that was addressed early during our, um, meeting. So, at this time, all of us...
Uh, I would ask if you could to have, uh, our city attorney give us an overview, please.
After, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, my name is Ben Ziegler. This is the first time I've appeared before you. It's a pleasure to be helping out the City of Florence with its, um, legal matters, and it's a great privilege to, to serve with you. Um, I was asked to take a look at the current, uh, Code of Ordinance's provisions that relate to, uh, animal control, specifically dogs, uh, in response to what Dr. Bruce and Ms. Boswell discussed, this issue of dangerous animals. How do we balance the, the concerns of, of public safety, effective and fair enforcement, but also, uh, as a pet owner, uh, myself, I don't want the restrictions to be so extreme as to make it burdensome to, to own pets. Um, I have to confess to you that I grew up in the house I live in at the dead end of Greenway Drive, and when I was a kid, the animal control officer used to back his truck down into the woods at the dead end of Greenway Drive and try to get my dogs and the neighbors' dogs. Everybody's dogs just sort of ran, uh, uh, ran around with that fence, and they were unrestrained. And my friends and I used to retaliate against him by crawling through the woods and crawling up behind his truck and letting the air out of his tires. I have a long history with the City of Florence Animal Control. As the mayor indicated from the title, uh, the ordinance, uh, deals with three separate sections of current code, Section 3.2, 3.7, and 3.11. If you have it in front of you, I could walk through some of the, uh, significant savings points of changes. Section 3.2 is where dangerous animal is defined, uh, in the code. And what we've done in, um, uh, repealing and replacing the existing definition, uh, is to make it a little bit clearer as to what constitutes a dangerous animal, and also, uh, make the threshold for an animal being dangerous somewhat lower. Uh, prior to this amendment and the existing code, in order to have a dangerous animal declared based on an attack, that attack had the result in bodily harm. Uh, working with council members and with Mr. Osterman on this, I think we all agreed that it's, um, uh, not a good thing to, to wait until somebody gets hurt before you do something about it. So, we changed that to take, uh, take away that, um, in the definition that you see, Section 1, uh, in 3 dash 2, that no longer requires an actual bodily harm for, uh, a dog to be a dangerous animal based on attack. Uh, secondly, in Section 3, uh, you'll see that we've added a provision that was not in the previous ordinance relating to pack-like behavior by dogs. As Dr. Bruce, I think, mentioned, uh, a lot of these attacks are by groups of dogs, and we all know that dogs are much more dangerous in a pack than they are individually. So, we allow, uh, if it's a, a group of three or more unleashed, non-muzzled dogs roaming unrestrained, uh, they can be declared dangerous. Uh, and finally, um, we added, uh, a specific provision, a new specific provision, that a dog can be, uh, declared dangerous simply by chasing or menacing. It doesn't have to be an attack. And finally, we, uh, added another C, uh, an exemption. Uh, a dog will not be declared a dangerous animal if it's a service animal that's being properly handled, uh, or if it is, uh, under restraint, being properly handled, protecting its owner. So, we felt like that, uh, balanced the concerns relating to, to, um, dangerous animals. The second provision that we revised is Section 3.11, uh, on, sorry, Section 3.7, uh, which is the public nuisance provision. This was already a pretty robust provision, but we felt like it could be tightened up. Um, we did a couple of things in Section C. Uh, we added that the right to impound an animal, uh, is, um, not preclusive of fining. It's not fine or impound. You can fine and impound. That wasn't made clear in the previous code. Um, and then there was a provision that I think has been necessitated by some recent enforcement efforts, uh, where a dog, uh, is picked up, and then the same dog is picked up, uh, a day or two later, and the owner says, well, no, I have a bunch of dogs, and that's a different dog. So, basically, we got rid of the different dog offense, or we precluded that different dog offense by saying, if you've got multiple violations, you own a bunch of dogs, we're gonna consider it to be the same dog. So, we got rid of that. And then finally, uh, in this section, we removed, uh, I think what Dr. Bruce mentioned, the, um, the first offense warning. You just get a warning, a citation. Uh, we felt like it needed a little more teeth, so the first offense is now $50. Uh, second offense, we increased from 50 to $75. Third, and subsequent offenses, from 75 to 100.
Go ahead.
It was mentioned, the Richland County ordinance was mentioned. Have you, by any chance, looked at that ordinance?
We looked at a number of ordinances. We, we looked at ordinances from Raleigh, North Carolina, to, um, Palm Beach, Florida. Uh, I will go back and make sure we looked at, at Richland, but what we've got in here, I feel pretty confident, is the latest, um, thinking from around the country in terms of municipal enforcement of, of dog issues.
And, um, I'm sure you heard my request about, um, that the ordinance be sent over to Ms. Boswell. Would you, uh, please speak with her, just to have a conference communication?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, and then finally, uh, we really beefed up, and really the sort of centerpiece of all this is the provision that deals with dangerous animals, um, in and of themselves. Um, this, we really beefed this up in terms of enforcement and penalties. Um, we now have in there affirmative, um, requirements that if you have dangerous animals, you have to properly accommodate them in terms of what kind of closures you put in, and that sort of thing. You can't just have dangerous animals running around a yard with, with holes to fence. So, there's now a affirmative, uh, requirement that owners maintain dangerous animals, uh, responsibly. Uh, second, we added more authority, uh, in Section 2, uh, on the part of the animal control officer to seize and impound dangerous animals. And then, finally, we increased the fines, uh, that are applicable to dangerous animals, to what we generally regard as the maximum, $500 is the maximum fine, is generally thought to be the limit of a municipal court's jurisdiction. That's something that probably needs to be revisited at some point by the legislature, uh, but you'll see it's $100, $200, and then, uh, $500 on third and subsequent offenses. Uh, Section D deals with when, uh, a dangerous animal can be destroyed. Uh, that was added, uh, to give more detail and more authorization, uh, to a city judge in making that determination if it's in the, uh, public interest and interest of public safety. Uh, and then, the last three provisions, we give the animal control officer heightened powers in terms of going on the property to seize animals, to inspect enclosures, and that sort of thing. And, and to this one, we also added at the end in Section G, that the, the different dog defense doesn't apply, uh, in the dangerous animal category. So, yes, sir?
Well, okay, well, and I do wanna emphasize that when he's talking to, uh, animal control office, it also states in there, our law enforcement officers. So, we can have a class of officers in that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we have two hands. We recognize Councilman McCall and Councilman Smith.
Uh, I think you may have answered my question. I think we had a, it was a discussion pertaining to, uh, class three officers, and I guess, and I think now they have heightened, uh, well, the, the animal control now have heightened, I guess, powers. Do you know, I guess maybe, maybe a random question is, what's the difference between a, uh, class three officer and their responsibilities? And I guess with the, I guess heightened responsibilities for the, uh, animal control agents?
Well, I, I can answer the second part of that. I'll ask Mr. Osterman to speak. The first part, I know the group of council members I met with, uh, as I think was stated by Mr. J. Bailey, uh, that, that they see this as very much as a first step. Uh, we wanted to go ahead and strengthen what we've got, but the second step is going to be, uh, changing the classification of animal control officers, giving them more, uh, more authority, more on par with, with other, um, public safety officers. And I guess the question was, what's the, what's the difference in terms of guard between an animal control and a class three officer?
Well, a class three officer has more of a, of a law enforcement capability. A class three officer is, is pretty much a police officer that can work within a, a set of, of confined restrictions, if you will. Animal control only, it, it, for this case to be. So, uh, we're currently, our, our, uh, animal control officers have some investigatory, uh, authority and some fines, but not truly the, the law enforcement abilities.
Are you aware of any other municipalities that have their, uh, I guess, animal control agents also?
We are, and, uh, even before the, even before this ordinance, uh, came in front of you, there had been discussions about, uh, moving, uh, animal control to the police department to serve as, as, as class three officer or work as a class three... We have to work through some of the logistics, 'cause not everybody who's an animal patrol officer necessarily wants to be a police officer. Not everybody wants a police officer, wants to be an animal patrol officer. So, we'll have to sort of work that out as we, as we move through.
Okay.
Councilman Smith.
Um, when it comes to fines, 'cause I know, um, Dr. Bruce came and talked about fines, where, where do our fines fit? As far as, are we higher, lower, or we kinda in the middle, as far as the other cities that we've researched?
I think, you know, with the maximum fine of $500, we're probably right on par. I know that some other jurisdictions have been imposing $600 fines, uh, and I'd be happy to do a little research on what would be required. There was a bill in General Assembly to increase administrative fines, uh, by municipalities to $1,000 maximum. I don't think that passed. So, we're right at the limit of what's generally thought to be acceptable for municipal fines. Now, keep in mind, every time this happens, it's a separate offense. So, you could very quickly, if you've got breeding operation, and you let your dogs out, and they're wandering around, every time one of those dogs gets picked up within a year, you get a reset after a year, um, every time one of those dogs gets picked up, it's, uh, it's a different offense. So, you can go up to 500 pretty quickly, and then it's 500 thereafter.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braden.
As I understand it, Ben, there's been some communication with the county, 'cause it would, obviously, you have a lot of properties that are some in the city, some in the county, and ideally, if the county does wish to take up something, it would be ideal if there was some compatibility.
Uh, Councilman Schofield, actually, I ran into him, and he heard that we were working on dog ordinance, and he said, I'd love to work with the city. Can you send me a copy of the ordinance? I said, well, if the city will have completed, it's, uh, so I think he's waiting to hear it.
And I do, I do wanna acknowledge for Councilman Schofield, the incident that we were talking about with that, where the dog was attacked, was actually in Councilman Schofield's area when this first started, and he started then, and started communication back then. So, having him now be on the county council will help bridge that communication, but that was in District 1, the first instance that occurred. Chair recognizes Councilman Braden.
Yeah, I wanted to make reference to that, too. We, we, we tried to line up and look at past both ordinances with the county, um, concurrently, but there was just, we had been waiting for theirs to go through, and, and it just became, uh, a, a point where we just needed to move forward. Yeah. So, we, we definitely took that into account.
I understand it's more of an acute problem in the city than the county.
Chair recognizes Councilman Smith Jackson.
Um, and I wanna thank everybody for their hard work, 'cause I know this wasn't an easy task, um, to do, because we do have the love for dogs, but we, we also have the love for public safety. So, when you're on that balance, and it's, and especially with us, we have to be able to focus on public safety. Um, so, it's, it's kind of a battle, but I wanna thank everybody, 'cause we did do good. I mean, we waited long enough for the county, and, uh, we didn't hear anything back, so we had to move on ours, because, again, ours is more acute than theirs. But we do understand that we have some gaps in county property here, and somebody living next door could be city. And what happens in the county, you know, may not happen in the city, but we're hoping that the city does take ours, 'cause I know theirs were, uh, something they want to work on, too. So, I think you did a good job for even the county to adopt this one as well.
Okay, this is a great start.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next, we'll move forward with, uh, reports to council, starting with our appointments to boards and commission. We're asking Mr. Davis to please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We have two boards or commissions that have vacancies. Our first board is the Florence Center Commission. We have one vacancy on that board. We have two applicants, Sanyaeta Cooper and James Hicks, and that falls, uh, to Councilwoman Barnes.
I'm going to defer again. Alright, thank you, Councilwoman.
Our next is, uh, vacancy on the Housing Authority Board. This position is the resident commissioner. That falls to Madam Mayor.
I would prefer that appointment.
Thank you. That completes our boards and commissions.
I have a question for Scotty. There was a, sorry.
Go ahead.
There was a removal of a board member a couple months ago.
Correct.
Is she still on the board, or has that been official yet, finalized?
No, that board member has been removed, uh, by, by motion of this council. Uh, spoke with our previous attorney, and her attorney, she's actually appealing that ruling, uh, so we have to wait until that... we have to wait until that appeals process is over before we're able to move on that.
Has it been, filed appeal yet?
It has been, it's my understanding that it's been filed, but nothing has been said.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lee Smith.
Yeah, I can, well, I'll, let me add what Mr. Davis said, the removed council members has, has an attorney that has filed an appeal, and under the housing authority provisions of the South County Code, it, she has a right to appeal, but it doesn't say anything about what her appeal looks like, so they filed basically a complaint in certain court, and we're researching the best way to respond to that complaint, but it'll probably be handled like an appeal to certain court, like you'd have from another, like a zoning opinion, a zoning issue or something, something like that, so we're, we're working with some state housing folks and others to figure out exactly what's the best way to frame this, but that'll be working its way through the process over the next few months.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lee Smith Jackson, following Councilwoman Lee Smith Jackson, we have Councilwoman Barnes.
And that was basically my question, was there a way to expedite this, because it seems like Ms. is sitting in limbo.
We, we are probably going to file a motion to dispose of it.
Okay.
Based on what they have filed, we're still in the process.
I appreciate that, please keep us posted.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, the appeals process, they, it would still come back to us to appeal, or would it go to the circuit?
No, ma'am, it would go to the circuit court.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we proceed? If not, Mayor's report. Basically, I'll just thank the council for what has been done, especially for the community meeting their needs when it came to that dog ordinance, but also I would encourage our general public to please go to the city of Florence Wellside to stay updated with activities here in the city, as well as also all other forms of social media, and also we do want to acknowledge that A E S C did have their groundbreaking this past week here in Florence, and it was very well attended, and I do want to acknowledge that our local youth from Woodson High School did come out to start the event off, and that was really great to have our young people involved, but also I do want to acknowledge on behalf of the community, Deacon Laverne Swinton, which is a longtime community member, but also a veteran, he passed this Saturday, Deacon Swinton was ninety-seven years old, and like I say, he was an honored vet, and he's also served his years as a musician, I see Dr. Laws here, and he was a tested doctor, that when it come to Mr. Swinton, I think most of us been under him in some kind of leadership role, he's also sung with Shirley Caesar, so his loss will be greatly felt in the community, so I do want to send my condolences to him, but also his church family, but also to the whole of the community, and to our musicians as well, that's, that's a great loss, so to his family, our condolences and prayers are with you. And that, at that phase, I would say, any projects that you see coming up into the city of Florence Wellside and going into town trying to explain those, please go to our city of Florence and watch the projects as they move forward. So at this time, we'll proceed with our committee reports, first we have a report from the Chair of our Business Development Committee, please, Chair.
Thank you, the Business Development Committee met on Thursday, May eighteen, at the Carolina Theater, the old Carolina Theater on South Dargan Street, we had a little road trip, went over there and had a tour of the building, which had had some minor demo work done, revealing some very interesting architectural features, and we got an update on a bid proposal for renovations, we were told, and, and it was, it was great, went through the downstairs, went through the upstairs, the mezzanine level, as well as the balcony level, and while it's very moldy, misty, dusty, in a very significant state of disrepair, the potential is dramatic, and the impact that it will have on downtown and adding another venue can be tremendous. I would ask Mr. Moore, if he would come forward, there was a notice that we had that June the sixth was going to be the opening of bids, and we are now at June the twelfth, and if you can give us an update, was there a bid opening on the, and just tell briefly about the project itself for the renovations of that facility?
Yes, so the renovations will include kind of bringing it up to, up to date, so to speak, as far as mechanical, electrical, all of those components, we'll also be working on making a lot of the repairs from years of damage that have been caused by the rain and various other elements, so we did receive the bids last week, when we originally took the bond out for this project back in twenty nineteen, we had an estimated cost of construction, we are now into twenty-two, or twenty-three, after all the architectural and structural engineering work that we've had to do, so obviously the impacts of construction costs have, we've seen that directly with this bid, so at this point, we are going to be meeting with our architectural consultants to develop a path forward on how to bring the project back into budget.
Okay, so if I hear you right, we don't have enough money to do what you were hoping to get done.
That's correct, well, yes, and we somewhat anticipated that, this is a very unique project, while it's not a true historical renovation, it is certainly something that is out of the scope for a lot of general contractors, so we wanted to go into this with a select few contractors to get, get us established where we currently are, so we can determine how best to do.
Well, we look forward to having additional updates going forward on this, thank you, I appreciate that. That was, it was very informative on behalf of the members who were there with us, so thank you for that, we also received from Mr. Hemingway, an update on where things are with regard to water and sewer utility projects, a number of them, the work is ongoing, but again, problems of contractors and engineers is still a significant issue in the city, as well as everywhere else, there has been some work that has been completed, the stormwater utility projects, the community master plan meetings, that has been completed, as y'all recall, we, it was a two-year study, we're about one year through the inspection, and A E Com, is that right, that's doing the engineering workforce, so we're very excited about the meetings that were held community-wide with regard to the master, stormwater master plan, and we look forward to getting their report sometime in the next several months, I'm not sure when. Pardon? It's a three-year program, and so they are through about a year and a half into it, so they're about halfway into it, so as soon as they get their report to us, I know that would be helpful, and then in regard to that, as the inspections have been going on, there have been a number of cleaning projects, San Anthony College Park area, Sandhurst area, Walkmore Drive, Malden Drive, Cannon Street, I know they're looking at Pennsylvania Avenue as well, to try to address some of the concerns along there, and a notice of award was given for some of these projects, and then one of the things you'll notice across the street from us is the urban square project, the demo of a couple of the buildings, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the footings have been, are in, underway getting put in for our new parking deck, that will be in conjunction with the new apartment complex that's going there, so everybody says, when is something gonna, when are they gonna start digging dirt? Well, they're digging dirt and putting footers in, so for our new four-story parking deck, so we're very excited about that, and any, unless other members of committee have anything further to add, that's our report.
Thank you, Chair, for that report, next we move to our Community Development Committee report from the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have much to say from the committee, but I do want to say kudos to our police department, we are locking them up, and I am loving, I'm loving what I'm seeing, you know, when you gave some piece to, there was a big lockup on last week, and there are some homeowners that's calling and saying, thank you, thank you, thank you, because we don't want to give a place to live for crime, we, if you're a criminal, we're coming for you, right? Right, so we thank you so much for a job well done, that concludes.
This, thank you for that report, Chair, next we have a report from the Chair of the Marketing Public Relationship Committee.
All righty, we had our meeting on May the seventeenth, one of the good things, you know, I always hop on this communication, effective communication, so, so glad to see our communication survey is out, making sure that everyone, please, please, please fill out this communication survey, it allows us to understand how you best or efficiently receive information, we want to make sure that we're building this trust and increase our relationships with our communities, it is definitely critical for us to, for advocacy and promoting our policies and making sure that everyone understands what each council member is doing, another thing we talked about is campaigns for awareness, I have this, it irks me every time I see a pedestrian with his back towards traffic, because nobody, you cannot see the car that not paying any attention, that's on the phone, and don't see you and hit you, so more campaigns about, and, and obviously, to our drainage, how to keep our drainage clear, so just awareness campaigns that we can give to our communities, help our communities and our citizens stay safe and healthy, I, another thing I want to push was council spotlights, because we as council are working individually on a lot of projects, but you don't get to see that when you're here, you only get to see us a, you know, second motion, that kind of stuff, but you don't understand our passion, our heart, and what we're truly working on, so I wanted to do, work on some council spotlights where we truly spotlight what you guys are working on, I know Councilman McColl, the municipal tax, Councilman Jubilee and Smith, the East Florence Corridor, Councilwoman Barnes works on the community and crime, Councilman Bradick, oh, boy, so we're working individually, but everybody don't get to see what we're working on, so I want to do some council spotlights, and not have any pushback on it, also Yard of the Month, Ms. Earlene Smith, down there on Sanborn and the corner of Pennsylvania, I have the pleasure of calling her Aunt Earlene, but congratulations to Ms. Earlene Smith on winning the Yard of the Month, we're continuously looking for more designations for our city, we received a list of designations that we're going to go over, and I think that that is it, again, make sure you do the survey, it is due by July twenty-eighth, and it lets us know how to communicate with everyone, June is Pollinator Month, and we have that thing, it's the city center on the twenty-fourth, is that what it is, everyone, the twenty-fourth, yep, so don't forget to come out and support at the farmer's market, at the city farmer's market, and that's all I have.
Thank you for that report, Chair, next we will have a report from the Chair of the Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we met a few days, a few weeks ago pertaining to the budget, of course we reviewed the monthly financials, as well as the upcoming budget, which was presented today, we looked at the impact of the, I guess Kevin always said thunder, he's, he's good at explaining more than me, but as you saw, the millage increase is, is, it's only five mills, and we're, we're a growing and robust city, with that, of course, it's increased services, and due to the, our millage rates been so low throughout the, throughout the time, we're having, trying to adjust it to catch up with the rest of the state, and also to be, continue to be business friendly, I think that's what got us to where we are right now, but at the same time, too, to make sure we are competitive in providing services to our, our, to our citizens, in addition, we looked at, I think what we voted on today as well is a raise of eight percent to staff, for staff salaries, although this year's only a four percent impact, because those increases is not to take place until, until January of twenty twenty-four, so it's a four percent impact, but it's an eight percent raise, missing entirety, we looked at the different, the difference in, on the budget from eight percent and seven percent and six percent, and we all, we discussed those things in the finance committee, and we was pretty upbeat about the progress of the city in our budget, and again, that includes our budget.
Thank you, Chair.
Committee meeting, committee report.
Thank you for that report, Chair recognizes Councilman Bradick.
And just to kind of follow up on your work that your committee did, as I understood it from Kevin, the local option sales tax is almost cutting in half the net impact that the millage increase is having, so just, so glad that that local option sales tax is, tax is in place, it certainly continues, and that second graph that, that was shown keeps us at a very, very affordable rate, but as you had mentioned before about the services and the need for that, but I, I just didn't want it to pass without mentioning the benefit of that.
Thank you to all the committee chairs for those reports, next on our agenda, we have our executive session items, the first item will not need to be addressed, that was in reference to our budget, if we would have needed any kind of legal advice, so at this time, the items we have on our executive session would be for discussion of matters related to proposed economic development project located within the overlay district thirty dash four dash seventy-eight five, then a personnel matter, thirty dash four dash seventy-eight one, do we have a motion?
So, second.
Have a motion in the second, end of discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, we announce that going to executive session, we can take a five, ten minute break, we are now returning from executive session, at which time no votes were taken, at this time, we will proceed with our executive session items as outlined, first item we had was a discussion matter of, matter related to a proposed economic development project located within the overlay district thirty dash four dash seventy-eight five, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to authorize our city attorney to draft a conditional grant related to a proposed economic development project located within the overlay district.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, do we have a, end of discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, and opposed by a like sign, let reflect that the motion has passed, and last item was a personnel matter, and we covered that, that concludes our agenda items, we can entertain a motion.
Some moves, second.
Motion in the second, end of discussion, hearing none, all those in favor adjourned, please signify by saying aye, aye, we stand adjourned, thank you.